Thank you, everyone, for waiting. Welcome to our first meeting of April. And I know it's April Fool's Day, but we are here and we're all business. So, we're going to get going now. Madam Clerk, will you please read the adequate notice of compliance statement?
Adequate notice of this meeting has been provided by the City Clerk's Office in preparation of the Council Annual Meeting Notice dated December 16th, 2024, which was properly distributed and posted per statutory requirements. Please be advised that fire exits are to my right, your left, and at the back of the room. The city has a listening system to assist the hearing impaired. If anyone needs hearing assistance, please obtain the system at the dais and return it thereafter.
Thank you very much. Roll call, please.
Mr. Boyer.
Present.
Ms. Hamlet.
Here.
Ms. Calmenson.
Here.
Mr. Polowski.
Here.
Mr. Smallwood.
Ms. Toth.
Here.
President McTiernan.
Present. All right, at this time, I'd like to call on Reverend Harrell to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
(Inaudible) allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. Thank you very much. Okay, at this time, Madam Clerk, will you please read the explanatory note regarding closed session and hearings and comments?
A closed-session meeting is authorized by state statute, was announced and held prior to the start of this meeting, and the known items for discussion were listed on the published closed-session agenda. Please be advised, the council meetings are broadcast live on Comcast Channel 36 and 34, and Verizon Channels 30 and 33, and rebroadcast on Thursdays and Saturdays on HGTV on Comcast Channel 36 and Verizon 33. When invited to speak, please come to the lectern, clearly state your name and address, spell your last name, and speak into the podium microphone so that your comments can be understood by all and properly recorded. Whenever an audience or council member reads from a prepared statement, please give her email a copy to thecityclerk@cityclerk@cityofsummit.org. To help facilitate an orderly meeting and to permit all to be heard, speakers shall limit their comments to three minutes. Unless you are using an electronic device to follow the meeting agenda, or needed for professional emergency contact purposes, please turn it off. Thank you.
Thank you very much. All right, we're at our report section of our meeting. As always, Madam Mayor, do you have a report for us this evening?
Thank you, Council President. I actually have a lot to say. I'm sorry, I'll try to be quick. Good evening, everyone. First, be sure to join us on April 10th from 3:00 to 5:00 p.m. at our brand-new fire station for the first-ever Summit Showcase. This is a fun and family-friendly event celebrating Local Government Week, where we'll bring together residents and our staff to share information, distribute fun swag, and showcase some cool vehicles. We'll have something for all ages, and there will be Summit wristbands, custom coloring sheets, and much more to give away. We're excited, and we hope we see you there. I also want to take a moment to express my pride in the work that the Board of School Estimates has done this year, which includes council members Delia Hamlet and Kevin Smallwood, as well as myself. We worked closely with the Summit School Administration to reduce the proposed school budget increase from almost 9% down to just under 4%. This was no easy task, but by encouraging them to find efficiencies and cost-sharing measures, we were able to ensure a fiscally responsible budget for our taxpayers while still supporting important projects like the new Jefferson School Playground and maintaining crucial programs for our students. This is a challenging budget season for schools across the country, and I'm proud of the collaborative effort that went into this. Going forward, we plan to work even more closely together throughout the year to streamline the budget process from the outset. I know Councilwoman Hamlet has been carrying around her trusty mega binder for months, diving into the numbers, and I'm happy to say that all of her hard work has truly paid off for the entire community. So, thank you, Councilwoman Hamlet. Next, I have an update on the circulars that many of you have reached out to me about. I know it's been a source of frustration for many of our residents, and I'm happy to report that our wonderful City Clerk, Rosie, has been in touch with the company responsible for distributing them. They've assured us they are making several improvements. They've briefed their distributors, rather, to ensure circulars are placed properly on driveways and not in the roadway or near sewer drains. They will also conduct weekly inspections to ensure compliance and perform a monthly cleanup to check for any improperly placed or unused bags. While we can't outright prohibit the distribution, I encourage residents who do not wish to receive these circulars to contact the company directly at 1-800-376-6222. You can also reach out to our City Clerk for assistance. Finally, in case you missed it, our incoming Chief of Police, Ryan Peters, and I held a virtual town hall on March 25th. We had a great turnout with lots of questions from residents, and we were able to address all of them in our timeframe. It was a fantastic way to connect with our community in a casual setting, and we plan to continue these quarterly town halls to cover various city issues. This is a great way for those who can't attend in person but can still get great and important information. If you missed it, you can watch the full Q&amp;A on our City of Summit Facebook page, Instagram, and YouTube channel. Thank you, and I look forward to seeing everybody at the Summit Showcase on April 10th.
Thank you very much. Great report. And now, we're on our city administrator report. Ms. Baldwin.
Thank you, Council President. Good evening, everyone. I want to start out by thanking everybody who participated in this past weekend's Earth Day cleanup at some of our local parks. It's always wonderful to see so many community members come out together to make the city even more beautiful. I understand that there is a picture of Councilman Bob Polowski looking kind of like a lumberjack with a tree over the shoulder. So, thank you to everyone. It really is a true testament to the spirit of volunteerism in Summit when everybody gets together to participate in these events. Looking ahead, we are excited for the annual Summit Easter egg hunt. It's happening on April 12th, family favorite and a great way to kick off the spring season. A reminder, this is a BYOB, that means Bring Your Own Basket. The hunt will begin promptly at 1:45, but we do encourage people to arrive a bit earlier. The festivities will start at 1:00 p.m., and it'll be a great, fun afternoon for all ages. In addition, I'm happy to announce that our municipal golf course officially opened today. This is a great opportunity for residents to learn the game of golf or enjoy a round with friends and family. Membership information is available at summitycommunityprograms.com. And this year, we have a new, exciting addition to the golf course, which is a permanent disc golf installation, which members can also enjoy. A quick reminder that April 11th is a parking holiday, April 18th is a parking holiday, and city offices will be closed, so please plan accordingly. And we look forward to seeing you all at the Easter egg hunt and out on the golf course. Thank you.
Thank you very much. All right, I'll keep my council president report very short. I wanted to thank our mayor, Councilwoman Hamlet, and Councilman Smallwood. I don't think the mayor, I mean, she's very self-effacing. She didn't give herself enough credit, nor the other two members. I just want to make it clear, we would be sitting with close to a 9% tax increase for our city or our school portion of our budget if it wasn't for those three. They're the only ones who spoke up, the only ones who said this, we can get a good result from our schools without digging and costing the average taxpayer in Summit $1,000 more in tax in a city where, in a state that's always already very affordability-challenged. So, I just really, really do want to thank them. I could not be more clear about this. That's what would have happened if they hadn't done the work, rolled up their sleeves, and dug in, and worked in a cooperative fashion with the Board of Ed and the administration over there to really advocate not just for our children, but for our taxpayers. So, I can't say how thankful I am for the hard work that they've really done for the last four weeks. It's really, really amazing. So, thank you. The other thing, I just hope, going forward, for people who pay attention, I think I've paid some attention. It's an understatement this year. I have very little idea what finally got voted on in that budget. I think most people would say the same. It's 50% of our property tax bill, and that has to change. That has to change. We need much, much more transparency out of the board, and certainly, I'm going to be advocating for that in the future because you guys, people deserve to know what their taxes are going for. I know we're going to start our budget process, and Councilwoman Toth is leading the Finance Committee, and we'll give all the numbers out. People know what we're going to be talking about, and there'll be pushback, I have no doubt, but it should be transparent. So, I'm looking forward to our budget process beginning...
Two weeks.
Three weeks, I'm sorry, three weeks. And we'll have a good, lively engagement with the public. And that is my report. Okay. At this time, we're going to go with our historical minute. Councilman Polowski.
Thank you. Tonight, we have Matt McKeever, who, if you can't guess from his attire, is here to hum a few bars about Summit baseball. A picky eater, though he sometimes tries new things. Matt is a Summit High School sophomore. He's a talented football and baseball player, an accomplished ski racer, and cliff diver as well. I'm pretty sure he does his homework and does well at school, too, so let's hear what you have to say, Matt.
I think you forgot golfing at the municipal golf course.
That's right. Okay. Anything else?
No, that's it. That's it. Good evening, everybody. My, as you said, my name is Matthew McKeever, and I'm a sophomore at Summit High School. And as you said before, I play football and baseball. And I was asked to present the historical minute here at the council. The 2025 baseball team is led by seniors Shane Walsh, T.J. Flack, Gavin Smith, Matt Keerich, Ryan Barber, Gavin Nolan, and Jack Cowden, along with juniors Connor Moon, Alex Schwark, Giovanni D'Agostino, Ben Cohen, and Matt Rossoff, and then sophomores Gavin Schnall, Javi Bonifante, myself, and freshman Ryan Flack. Our team practices at Summit, at the high school, and Soldier's Memorial Field during the preseason. I prefer practicing at Memorial, not just because it's directly across from my house, but also, more importantly, the field itself has a longstanding history with baseball. Summit High School has played baseball at Memorial Field for over 100 years. The Cornog Fieldhouse is named after Summit Coach Elwood Cornog, who began coaching in Summit 100 years ago. Legendary players Willie Wilson, Arthur Vivian, and Robert Brydon spent time on Memorial Field. All three led their teams to state championships and were three of the best hilltoppers to play the game. Wilson went on to play outfield for the Kansas City Royals for over 12 seasons and is a member of the Royals Hall of Fame. Both Brydon and Vivian were offered contracts in the big leagues. However, their professional careers conceded with the start of the Second World War. Both Brydon and Vivian were Marines stationed in the Pacific. Brydon was seriously injured, and Vivian lost his life. Summit was also the home to a professional baseball team, which played on Memorial Field. The Summit Red Sox of the Lackawanna Baseball League called Memorial Field their home. This semi-pro baseball team played in the '20s and '30s until World War II. One player who stood out for the Summit Red Sox was Joe Medwick. Medwick played in 1928, 1929, and 1930, and was a Carteret native. He was a sophomore in high school when he was recruited to play for the Summit Red Sox. Undaunted by his young age, he rose to the challenge and batted over 400 for his career as a Red Sock. At the end of the 1930 summer season, while standing on Memorial Field, Medwick signed a contract with the St. Louis Cardinals. Medwick played in the major leagues for 17 years. He had a batting average of .324 and won the World Series in 1934, and he was elected to the Hall of Fame in 1956. So, it is with this proud tradition of baseball excellence, the hilltoppers intend to take the field again at Memorial and carry on the tradition of Cornog, Medwick, Brydon, Vivian, and Wilson. Our home opener is Thursday at 4:00 p.m. against Roseell Park. We hope to see you at the field and hope that this brief history of baseball in Summit enhances the experience. Go, hilltoppers!
Thank you, Matt. Hope Summit gets a few of those torpedo bats.
Can I get his report?
Oh, if you have a written report, can you please either email it or hand it to the clerk?
Thank you.
Thank you, guys. All right, we are now to our ordinance for introductions. I just want to say, I know there's a lot of people here. These are ordinances, we are introducing them today. The hearing is in three weeks, where people will have an opportunity to speak on each of these ordinances. We are going to have public comments after the business of the meeting is done. If people want to stay and talk about what they want to talk about, that's A-OK. But I just want to set expectations. When we introduce these, we will not be talking about them, okay? But I do, you know, obviously, you guys are here, you want to talk about something, and I'm, we're more than happy to hear it, but just at a different portion of the meeting, okay? So, that's that. All right. Do you want to say something, Madam Mayor?
Yes, before we start. Before, there is one ordinance that, before it gets introduced, I just like, I feel like I need to make a couple of comments based on some feedback that I've received over the past couple of days. First, I want to apologize to my mayor's homelessness task force for the whiff of not giving the task force a heads-up on the sleeping and camping outside ordinance that is being introduced this evening. Sorry, my voice is not good today. In hindsight, I should have, and so, my apologies for all of you who have worked so tirelessly to house 20 individuals in the last nine months. It's been an incredible effort, and so, I'm just sorry about that. I hope you can forgive me. It was definitely an oversight. Second, I do want to be clear that the timing of this agenda item has nothing to do with the ending of the Warm Hearts Day program. It is, joke's on me, it's April Fool's Day? I don't know. It was really unfortunate timing, a really unfortunate coincidence that those are sort of coinciding. It was certainly not the intention. And lastly, the hearing will be on, it'll be three weeks, it'll be on the 22nd. Somebody, I think, asked me if there's a chance that we can move the hearing, but once the hearing date has been announced, we cannot by law, so... But the good news is that we do have an extra week between this meeting and the hearing, and we do welcome feedback. I have heard some already, and I expect to hear more, and I'm sure we all will hear some more. So, just wanted to go on record as saying all those things prior to ordinances this evening. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. All right. So, we've got a couple of ordinances for introduction. Madam Clerk, will you please read the finance ordinance for introduction, please?
Yes. ID number 11876, bond ordinance providing for the acquisition of a portion of property, parentheses 402 Broad Street, in and by the City of Summit County of Union, New Jersey, appropriating $210,000 therefore, and authorizing issuance of $200,000 in bonds or notes of the city for financing such appropriation.
Thank you very much. Councilwoman Toth.
Thank you, Council President. This ordinance will allow the city to purchase the so-called Finger Lot on Broad Street between the former Firehouse and the Chestnut Street parking lot. And acquiring this final piece of that larger property allows the city to sell it to a developer so it can see its highest and best use. And specifically, this ordinance allows the city to spend up to $210,000, which includes the professional and transaction fees associated with the purchase. City puts down 5% and therefore can issue a bond for up to $200,000. I move to introduce this ordinance.
I will second it.
Thank you.
Okay. Roll call, please.
Mr. Boyer.
Aye.
Ms. Hamlet.
Aye.
Ms. Calmenson.
Aye.
Mr. Polowski.
Aye.
Ms. Toth.
Aye.
President McTiernan.
Aye. Motion carries. All right, Madam Clerk, will you please read the first safety and health ordinance for introduction?
ID number 11870, an ordinance amending and supplementing the Code of the City of Summit Chapter III police regulations to add new sections, 3-17, entitled Skateboards, Scooters, and Other Non-Motorized Personal Transportation Devices, and 3-18, entitled Electric Personal Transportation Vehicles.
Thank you very much. Councilman Boyer.
Thank you, Council President. I think people have been waiting for this one. This is ordinance ID number 11870, Regulation of Personal Transportation Devices, and is intended to enhance pedestrian safety in Summit by establishing clear rules for the use of personal transportation devices in our community. It prohibits electric bicycles and scooters from being operated on sidewalks and pedestrian pathways throughout the city, ensuring these high-speed devices are used only on designated roadways. Additionally, it bans the use of bicycles, skateboards, and other non-motorized devices on sidewalks within the downtown district. And if you look in the packet, it states out what the streets are, a high-traffic area where pedestrian safety is our top priority. Outside of downtown, non-motorized devices are still permitted on sidewalks, but riders must slow down and yield to pedestrians at all times. This ordinance promotes responsible use of devices while protecting the shared use of sidewalks and public spaces. I move to open this ordinance for a final hearing.
Second.
All right, roll call, please.
Mr. Boyer.
Aye.
Ms. Hamlet.
Aye.
Ms. Calmenson.
Aye.
Ms. Polowski.
Aye.
Ms. Toth.
Aye.
President McTiernan.
Aye. Motion carries. All right, Madam Clerk, will you please read the second safety and health ordinance for introduction?
ID number 11880, an ordinance amending Chapter III police regulations of the Code of the City of Summit to revise Section 3-16, entitled Resident Protection.
Thank you so much. Councilman Boyer.
Once again, thank you, Council President. This is ordinance 11880, which updates and strengthens our city's police regulations, reinforcing our efforts to protect residents from growing threats of property crime, vehicle theft, and home evasions. Specifically, it prohibits the unauthorized presence of private, presence of private property while possessing devices capable of cloning key fob signals, detecting key fobs inside vehicles or homes, or jamming Wi-Fi signals that could disable alarm systems or emergency communication. It also expands the definition of suspicious activity, such as peering into vehicles or attempting to access private structures, and clarifies penalties for violations. I respectfully request to move this ordinance for a final hearing.
Second.
For introduction.
For introduction, sorry.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All right, roll call, please.
Mr. Boyer.
Aye.
Ms. Hamlet.
Aye.
Ms. Calmenson.
Aye.
Mr. Polowski.
Aye.
Ms. Toth.
Aye.
President McTiernan.
Aye. Motion carries. All right, last safety and health ordinance for introduction, could you please read it for us, Madam Clerk?
ID number 11871, an ordinance amending Chapter III police regulations of the Code of the City of Summit to add a new section, 3-19, entitled Camping or Sleeping on Public Property.
Thank you. Councilman Boyer.
Once again, thank you, Council President. This is ordinance ID number 11871. This ordinance adds a new section to 3-19 to the city's police regulations, establishing clear rules that prohibit sleeping or camping in public spaces such as sidewalks, parks, streets, benches, and other public areas. The purpose is to preserve the safe and accessible use of public property for all residents, pedestrians, and businesses. This ordinance addresses the growing concerns about obstructions and public nuisances caused by encampments while ensuring our shared spaces remain clean, safe, and welcoming for the community. I move this ordinance for introduction.
Second.
All right, roll call, please.
Excuse me, Council President. Although there is no hearing this evening, you've traditionally allowed council members to speak when an ordinance is introduced, and I would like to speak.
Okay, I have traditionally not done that, but I will allow you to speak.
You certainly, you have on multiple occasions this year.
Yes, well, if you're requesting to speak, Councilwoman Toth, I'm more than happy to allow you to speak.
Thank you so much, Council President. I oppose the introduction of this ordinance. After two years of significant process, progress on reducing homelessness in Summit, capped by our receiving national recognition at the recent National Alliance to End Homelessness Conference in Los Angeles, this moves us in the wrong direction. Morristown recently was ready to move forward on a similar ordinance, and after community backlash, it pulled the ordinance and elected instead to follow the model that Summit established. That model has drastically reduced the number of unhoused and has improved public safety. We should not go backwards now. Members of a number of organizations working on solving homelessness, knowing they could not speak, have chosen to show up tonight to witness the disapproval of this ordinance. It includes members of Family Promise, both nationally for Union County, Monarch Housing, Bridges, Ship, and Grace. For these and many other reasons, I oppose the introduction of this ordinance. Thank you.
Council President.
Are you going to oppose it as well?
Absolutely. Now, I'm gonna, I'm gonna make a comment since Councilwoman Toth had made a comment.
Hold on. This is not a, we're just introducing it.
Absolutely.
You are in favor of introducing it. You've already said your piece. We can talk about this at the hearing, okay?
Council President, I think it's only fair that if Councilwoman Toth was able to make a speech to everyone, right? I'm introducing this ordinance. I think it's only fair that I comment. I actually was going to say something, but out of respect to this council, I didn't. But since Councilwoman Toth did, I think it's only fair to address the public as well. Can you allow me that, please?
Council President.
Do you have a word?
Thank you, Council President.
You may speak.
I appreciate that. In some sense, we have two different ideas, right? To me, they're both compassionate, but they're simply just different ideas. On one hand, you have a group who want to help the homeless, or the unhoused, as some would say, while they're homeless. And on the other hand, you have a group that would rather stop them from being homeless. But really, the biggest benefit is to stop them from being homeless. I want to remind everyone that it was this current administration that housed 20 out of the 25 individuals out there. Wasn't the last one, wasn't the one before that, it was this one. It was our mayor that put together a task force with the help of some of you in the crowd here that housed these individuals. So, it is a balance. You know, as we've seen across cities like San Francisco, Seattle, some Toronto, you know, when officials back down and face short-term pressure, it leads to things that they have to now then turn back on, right? Look at San Francisco, encampments all over the streets. So, you had the city council had to come back and remove them. Now, people elected me probably to say what they probably wouldn't get up here and say, what they're, what they're thinking, you know? We are balancing compassion with accountability and upholding law and justice. And that's what this is about. It's not about criminalizing homelessness, but it's about doing the right thing. We want to prevent homelessness, not maintain it. Thank you, Council President.
Council President.
I'm calling for a roll call now. Roll call.
Mr. Boyer.
Aye.
Ms. Hamlet.
I have a question about procedure. Can I ask a question about procedure, Council President?
Yes.
Mr. Giacobi.
Yes.
Are comments allowed from the council during an introduction or not?
If the chair permits it.
And the only reason I ask is because I actually had a comment about the electric vehicle one, and I'm just curious, what the...
Typically, this is an introduction. And with an introduction, you're just introducing it, putting the pot on notice that there's going to be a hearing on it where the council will make comments, and they'll hear comments from the public. And that's what you're doing three weeks from now.
Okay.
This is merely an introduction. The council, the chair permitted limited comments, but it's more typical that it's done just with an introduction.
The reason we have ordinances for introduction, because they're ordinances, they're laws, they carry more weight than resolutions. That's why they are pre-announced to be introduced, so the public has every opportunity to understand that they can come when there's a hearing to talk about it. But they're just being introduced. It doesn't mean an ordinance gets, should be talked about twice, okay? Resolutions get talked about once, and ordinance gets talked about once. But because, as you people are here, understand, ordinances are different, and the governing body, for full transparency, wants to make sure that people understand it's out there, they're introduced, they're not taken by surprise, they have an opportunity to make plans, to come later to speak. That's why when we introduce an ordinance, everyone will have an opportunity to talk about it, but they'll talk about it in the hearing, okay? That's why we don't, we're not doing discussions, okay? Does that answer your question?
It's fine. Like, when do we have time to discuss, like, the ordinance for the, for the motor, the electronic scooters? I actually had, the only time we can actually talk about stuff is when we're up here. only time we can actually talk about stuff is when we're up here.
When we have our hearing.
Right, okay, that's fair, but we don't have any time to adjust. Anyway, I'd respectfully like to make a comment, but I respect the fact that I'm not allowed to, considering I was on the homeless task force, but that's okay.
Roll, we've had one vote, Councilwoman...
Ms. Hamlet?
Aye.
Ms. Calmenson?
Aye.
Mr. Palowski?
Aye.
Ms. Toth?
Nay.
President McTiernan?
Aye. Motion carries. All right, we're on to our resolution section of our meeting. We have a few tonight. First up is Capital Projects, Councilwoman Hamlet.
Thank you, Council President. This is ID 11806, establishing 2025 fees for operating and maintaining the sanitary sewer system. The 2025 sewer user charge is derived by combining charges established by the joint meeting of Essex and Union Counties, which I serve on, with the city's sewer, sorry, sewer utility operating budget. The fee is lenable. The 2025 proposed rate is $399. The number of units in Summit is 11,521. New Providence is 277.98 with 3400 units, and then the industrial total is $30851.40. I would like to move this resolution.
Second.
All right, do I have any comments from the public? Comments from council? I'll just make one comment. We, we are an equity owner in the joint meeting, so we're one of, correct me if I'm wrong, Director Schager, 13 towns that own it?
Correct.
Yeah. This could not be replicated today, it just couldn't be. This was built in the 1920s. This is an amazing asset that we have. This is a bargain for Summit residents at $399. Any community around here, you're gonna, these are, your sewer fees are gonna be 100, $200 more per household. So the management, I know Councilwoman Hamlet sits on the board, it's collected from different towns, it's a well-managed organization, they raise capital, they fix it, they do all those kind of things, and this is one of the great things that living in Summit gives you, is a great service at a very, very reasonable price. So, that's my comment. All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. All right, Capital Projects, number two, Councilwoman Hamlet.
Thank you, Council President. This is ID 11827, authorizing the 2025 submittal of the 2024 Tonnage Grant Report to the New Jersey State Department of Environmental Protection, whereas the mandatory source separation of recycling act has established a recycling fund from which tonnage grants may be made to municipalities in order to encourage local separation and recycling programs, and whereas the City of Summit has maintained a cycling, recycling program which conforms with New Jersey Department of Environmental Protection Bureau of Recycling and Planning Rules and Regulations, whereas the City of Summit has incurred expenses associated with recycling that are not offset by revenues from the sale of the recycling materials, and the City of Summit continues to actively promote recycling of as many materials as practical in order to achieve a minimum recycling rate of 50%. Now therefore be it resolved that the City of Summit Common Council endorses the submission of the recyclage tonnage report for 2024 to the New Jersey DEP, and this will result in a tonnage grant for 2025. I'd like to move this resolution.
Second.
Do I have comments from the public? Comments from council? All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Capital Projects, number three, Councilwoman Hamlet.
Thank you, Council President. This is ID 11879. Before I begin, Rosie, I'd like to mention there's a Scribner's error in packet page 31. There were no bids received in the memo, it says a loan bid was received, if we could just mark that down.
Is that correct, Mr. Schager?
Through you, Council President. Yes, it's correct. Later in the memo, it says there is no bids, but we kind of rushed this one on, so I missed that, that's not me, but there were no bids.
So again, this is 11879, whereas no bids were received by the purchasing agent for the 2025 micro-surfacing project on March 25th, whereas the Department of Community Services requests permission to re-advertise for the 2025 micro-surfacing project type A. I would like to move this resolution.
Second.
Comments from the public? Comments from council? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. All right, moving right along to community programs and parking services, number one, Councilman Palowski.
Thank you. This is resolution ID number 11841, to authorize a down payment to purchase playground equipment at Tatlock Playground under a New Jersey state contract. In anticipation of our renovation of the Tatlock Washington School Playground, we are placing an order for a custom owl, the Washington Owls, and an egg with a bench accessories. To place that order, we need to make a down payment, the amount of $56,774. This resolution authorizes us to place the order, enter the contract, and make the down payment. I move to pass this resolution.
Second.
Comments from the public? Comments from council?
I have one question.
Yes, please, Councilwoman Hamlet.
Councilman Palowski, I just have a question about the, how, and Tammy, you might be able to answer this, if we typically have to put 5% down for the, for the capital, capital budget, and we were planning the entire playground, but we're only getting two items for this, how do we, how is that working? I know it's sort of a long question, but I'm just need to rectify it in my brain.
Through you, Council President. So these items have like an eight-month or nine-month lead time, so we are only paying a down payment from funds that we secured. We, we adopted a portion of the funding for the project, last year's capital budget, and the rest of it this year. So this down payment for these two items will get them started manufacturing them so that they're ready for installation, and again, it's coming out of last year's capital.
Okay, and so maybe this is a question for Mr. Rosroski, but the owl is not just an owl, right? It's part of the playground for $399,000. Okay, just wanted to make sure.
Sorry. Since I'm up here...
Just wanted to make sure, just looking over the budget here.
Since I'm up here, we did have a presentation by David Guida, and it's a play apparatus.
So it's not just the owl, it's the actual playground?
Right, right, it's a big piece of the playground.
Just checking, sure, it wasn't that expensive, but, okay, thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments from council? All right, roll call. Or not roll call, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. All right, community programs and parking, number two, Councilman Palowski.
Thank you. This is resolution ID number 11847, to appoint community programs advisory board member. In accordance with our closed session discussion, I move to appoint Alex Levkov to the Department of Community Programs Advisory Board.
Second.
Comments from the public? Comments from council? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. All right, we're on to finance. Finance, number one, Councilwoman Toth.
Thank you, Council President. This is resolution 11875. The Finance Committee just recently put forth the proposed ordinance to acquire the Fingerlot property on 402 Broad Street. This resolution authorizes the city to establish a temporary capital budget for the land acquisition similar to our temporary operating budget. This item will be included in the larger capital budget when it's introduced at the next meeting. I move to adopt this resolution via a roll call vote.
I second.
And before we go forward, Council President, having just introduced this resolution, I move to amend it. And specifically, I'd like to amend the third whereas clause by adding the words "for the specific purpose of acquiring the property located at 402 Broad Street in the City of Summit" to the end of that clause. It would then read, "whereas it is desirable to adopt a temporary capital budget for the year 2025 for the specific purpose of acquiring the property located at 402 Broad Street in the City of Summit." And this amendment clarifies the property being purchased so the resolution can be understood on its own terms. I move to amend this resolution.
Just a point of order, Matt, do, should, do we need to vote on the amendment first, or can we just vote?
You can adopt the resolution as amended by Councilwoman Toth.
All right, so I'll second the amended resolution.
Okay.
For, okay.
Thank you.
Good. That was clear for everybody? Yes?
Can we just add "portion of" the property?
A portion of the property, thank you, thank you.
As amended again.
Okay.
All right, and I second...
We're wordsmithing as we go.
Council President, just for clarity...
Hold on, hold on one sec. Is it, is it, are we getting clarification on the amendment?
Yes.
Yes, please.
Yeah, I'd like to ask our city solicitor, what, so the language changes, what significance?
It's just a portion of the whole property, it's the Fingerlot, so it's limited to...
No, I understand that, but what's the significance of the change?
It's just making it clear.
Okay.
It has no impact, it's just making it clear, and I think it's Councilwoman Toth... Sorry, Rosie, I got scolded before for not talking to my mic. Councilwoman Toth pointed out that if you read it on its own, people understand what this is for, it's not, you can read it without having all the other backup.
Okay, great. All right, so I seconded that. Do we have any comments from the public on this amended, amended resolution? No, comments from council? Yeah, the only thing I would say, like, this is a little different than what we normally do, but as was mentioned with the ordinance, we're in negotiation to try and make the old firehouse lot more desirable, to control all the lots, the contiguous lots. So we've been negotiating, and we're happy to say that we've come to a verbal agreement where we're going to be doing a land swap between our property and the owner of the Fingerlot, whereas we're, it's basically for parking spaces. So it's a, I think, council has all approved going down this path, we have to pay for part of it because we're getting more land than we're giving up, I think is kind of the long and the short of it.
That's exactly right.
Yeah, so with that, unless there are no other comments?
Okay.
All right, roll call, please.
Mr. Boyer?
Aye.
Ms. Hamlet?
Aye.
Ms. Calmenson?
Aye.
Mr. Palowski?
Aye.
Ms. Toth?
Aye.
President McTiernan?
Aye. Motion carries. Okay, finance, number two, Councilwoman Toth.
Thank you. This is resolution ID 11864, and this is our routine, non-emergency resolution authorizing emergency temporary appropriations to the temporary operating budget. And by now, we can probably all recite this one together. In January, council passed a temporary budget allowing us to spend up to 26.25% of last year's budget. Expenses are lumpy, many are front-loaded, and thus, until we adopt our operating budget next month, we regularly authorize what the state requires us to call emergency temporary appropriations. And I move to adopt this resolution via a roll call vote.
Second. All right, comments from the public? Comments from council? All right, roll call, please.
Mr. Boyer?
Aye.
Ms. Hamlet?
Aye.
Ms. Calmenson?
Aye.
Mr. Palowski?
Aye.
Ms. Toth?
Aye.
President McTiernan?
Aye. Motion carries. Finance, number three, Councilwoman Toth.
Thank you, Council President. This is resolution ID 11865. This is the Sewer Utilities Routine Non-Emergency Resolution Authorizing Emergency Temporary Appropriations to the Temporary Sewer Utility Budget. And this expense is necessary to keep our sewers flowing until we adopt the 2025 Sewer Utility Budget next month. I move to adopt this resolution via a roll call vote.
I second. Comments from the, ugh, comments from the public? Comments from council? Roll call, please.
Mr. Boyer?
Aye.
Ms. Hamlet?
Aye.
Ms. Calmenson?
Aye.
Mr. Palowski?
Aye.
Ms. Toth?
Aye.
President McTiernan?
Aye. Motion carries. Finance, number four, Councilwoman Toth.
Sorry, Council President?
Yes.
Can we go back for a second on 11865?
The one we just voted on.
Yeah, I apologize, I thought I didn't need to ask a question, but I do. Why are the numbers 625 versus 725? There's a $100,000 difference, I just don't understand it. I don't know if it's an error, but I shouldn't, we should, I should have paused it, I thought I didn't need to. It says that on, I'm sorry, it says, whereas the total emergency chapter resolutions adopt in 2025 pursuant to the provisions of NJSA Chapter 96 for the sewer utility budget, and this resolution totals 725, but then in the bottom line, it just says other expenses are 625, so I just wanted to confirm what the final number was.
Our CFO is flipping through her papers?
I don't know how we go back, Mr. Giacobi, but it's a $100,000 difference, so...
Yeah, no, it's fine.
Of course, take a pause.
Through you, Council President, I believe that I was trying to put 725 as a total, so it's 625 in the joint meeting and $100,000 in the other OE, but that would make the total 725 for the temporary budget. And I missed that in the total.
What's the other OE?
Other operating expenses, aside from the joint meeting payment, which we pay quarterly.
So is that typically broken up into two?
Yes.
Okay, so that makes sense, then.
So what we should do then is just do another roll call, amend, we should amend this to be 725.
I apologize, that's my fault.
And then we'll revote it.
Okay, sorry, that's my fault.
Thank you for that catch.
No, not your fault, thank you, Councilwoman Hamlet. All right, so I have a motion to amend the...
I'm so moved.
Second.
All right, roll call on the amended resolution?
Mr. Boyer?
Aye.
Ms. Hamlet?
Aye.
Ms. Calmenson?
Aye.
Mr. Palowski?
Aye.
Ms. Toth?
Aye.
President McTiernan?
Aye. Motion carries. The amended, carries. Thank you, Councilman, Councilwoman Hamlet. Okay, finance, number four, Councilwoman Toth.
Thank you, Council President. This is resolution ID 11849. At its reorganization meeting, council passed a resolution authorizing Police Chief Steven Zagorsky to write checks for up to $200 at a time from the city's petty cash account. Chief Zagorsky is retiring, and effective May 1, Chief Ryan Peters will head our police department. This resolution transfers Chief Zagorsky's check-writing authority to Chief Peters. I move to adopt this resolution.
Second. Comments from the public? Comments from council? Councilwoman Hamlet?
I'm not sure if it matters, just a recommendation to add Chief Peters' name on the, on the resolution ID, I'm not sure if I'm seeing the right one. I'm thinking, this may just be the note, Rosie, or the memo, I'm sorry.
Yeah, we had pointed out there was a typo in the memo.
Oh, okay, perfect, yeah, sorry, I missed that. So it says Andrew Bartolotti.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's the, that's the memo. Okay, yep.
Other comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Finance, number five, Councilwoman Toth.
Thank you, Council President. This is resolution ID 11878. The city's qualified purchasing agent plays a critical role in our finances. It's how we, it's the person who makes sure we can buy things and award city contracts. Our qualified purchasing agent, Natasha Metisak, is on temporary leave, and while she's away, our recently hired assistant treasurer, Ann Stusnick, will serve as the qualified purchasing[1701.83] our recently hired Assistant Treasurer, Ann Stusnick, will serve as the qualified purchasing agent. Ms. Stusnick has the credentials to act in that capacity. I move to adopt this resolution.
Second. Comments from the public? Comments from council? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. All right, moving along. Safety and Health Resolution Number One, Councilman Boyer.
Thank you, Council President. This is Resolution ID Number 11820. I am happy but sad to announce that Captain Michael Schreiber has put in for retirement, and that his effective date of retirement will be June 1, 2025. So this resolution is respectfully requesting to declare four vacancies for Captain, Lieutenant, Sergeant, and Police Officer. I move this for adoption.
Second.
Comments from the public? Comments from council? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
There will be other times I can talk about how wonderful he is.
Yes. All right. Safety and Health, number two, Councilman Boyer.
Thank you once again, Council President. This is Resolution ID 11835, which authorizes the Summit Police Department to apply for federal funding through fiscal year 2026 New Jersey Division of Highway Traffic Safety, State and Community Highway Safety Grant Program. This grant supports initiatives aimed at improving traffic and pedestrian safety, including enforcement against distracted and aggressive driving, impaired driving, and enhanced protection for pedestrians, bicyclists, and other vulnerable roadway users. Given Summit's weekday congestion and consistently high volume of pedestrian traffic, this funding would directly support targeted enforcement and education efforts designed to enhance pedestrian safety. I move this resolution for adoption.
Second.
Comments from the public? Comments from council? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Safety and Health, number three, Councilman Boyer.
Thank you, Council President. This is Resolution ID Number 11846, which accepts a generous $5,000 donation from the Summit Elks Lodge Number 1246 in support of the Summit Police Department's DARE program. This program, which is taught in all five of Summit's public elementary schools, plays an important role in educating our youth about drug resistance, responsible decision-making, and building trust between students and law enforcement. The Elks Lodge, the Elks Lodge's continued support is a testament to their commitment to our community wellness and youth engagement. I move this resolution for adoption.
Second.
Comments from the public? Comments from council? I would say is thank the Elks Lodge for their generous donation, and I know Officer Katiga does a fantastic job with our DARE program. It's just that my kids went through it through the middle school. I think it's memorable for them, and they do a great job, and it's one of the many ways our police department does community outreach, and it's a really, really good one with a super, super great purpose. So this is awesome that the Elks is supporting this. All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. All right, last one. Safety and Health, number four, Councilman Boyer.
Thank you once again, Council President. This is Resolution ID Number 11869, authorizing the execution of completion agreement, the Firehouse Project. As discussed in closed session, I move this agreement for adoption.
Second.
Comments from the public, please? Comments from council? All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. All right, we're on to the consent agenda. Do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented?
So moved.
Second. All right, do I have any comments from the public on anything on the consent agenda? Comments from council? Yes, Councilwoman Hamlet?
Can we just, I just wanted to talk about the SDI one that's in here, because I don't know if we had resolved the one that was pulled from the prior meeting on the insurance. So, Rosie, do we have to do that?
So through you, Council President?
Yes.
SDI is, continues to be on our policy.
Okay.
Although they have secured their own, it is not complete without some need for improvement on their part.
That's all I wanted to know. Work in progress.
So we're going to kind of work together.
That's fine, we don't need to pull it out, then. Yep.
Good question. Other comments from council on the consent agenda? All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right, the consent agenda passes. Okay, that is done with the business portion of our meeting. We are on to our public comment section of our meeting. I'll just ask people, if they would like to make a public comment, please approach the dais, give your name, your address, and please, just to help everyone comment, please limit your comments to three minutes or under. Thank you.
And items that are not on the agenda.
Oh, and these are for items not on, that have been spoken about on the agenda. Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor Fagan, Council President McTernan, members of the council. My name is Richard Uniac. I serve as the President of Bridges Outreach, and we are located at 120 Morris Avenue in Summit. I really wanted to share tonight how proud I've been of the work that's being done in Summit, the formation of the Mayor's Task Force to solve homelessness in Summit, the data-driven Housing First approach, and our ability to bring in DCA to help facilitate a rapid rehousing sprint. We've been doing all the things right. With the Mayor's leadership, we were able to convene key stakeholders, we established a by-name list, and there has been consistent weekly case collaboration. When we began, the by-name list had 35 names on it, and since then, through rapid rehousing, homelessness prevention, all the acronyms, and diversion, we've made huge progress. Diversion, by the way, I feel I should clarify, is also known by its full name as shelter diversion. It's a process by which we use flexible funding in order to prevent a household from needing a shelter placement. Diversion is not just sending someone somewhere else unless we're connecting them by way of a warm handoff to supports at that other location. During this time, we have also prevented homelessness for seven households right here in Summit. Homelessness is on the rise in New Jersey, and evictions are the primary driver. The fastest-growing trend happens to be single moms facing homelessness. Our outreach teams must remain vigilant, and our case managers must remain creative. To be clear, our aim at Bridges is to pivot to a stance much more focused on homelessness prevention in Summit, and I believe that to be possible in the short term. I believe there is a solution which affirms the rights of all involved, and I would encourage you all to reach out to the Office of Government Services or Office of Homelessness Prevention to pursue such a path. Thanks very much.
Thank you. If, just as a general statement, if you're reading from a prepared comment, could you either email it to the clerk, or if you have a hard copy, just hand it to her, and then we'll make sure it gets into the public record? Thank you.
Tom Zieber, 768 Springfield Ave, Apartment A3. Good evening. I know this was touched on a little bit earlier, but I decided to come and give remarks tonight because I felt compelled to offer thanks to Mayor Fagan, Councilwoman Hamlet, and Councilman Smallwood for their work in ensuring that the final school budget for fiscal year 2025 and 2026 is fair both to Summit's students and Summit's residents. So by way of background, I'm 38 years old, I'm a proud public school kid myself, my wife is in her mid-30s, and we don't have children yet, but when we do, we expect that they will attend Summit's outstanding public schools. I fully support our societal goal of providing access to quality education to every student, and believe that our community is better off when every child receives the best possible education. But the original school budget proposal, which would have imposed an 8.83% increase on Summit taxpayers, did not adequately strike a balance between the school board's obligation to students and its obligation to those who foot the bill. Budget increases may well be necessary from time to time, but to allow them on the scale that was originally proposed was not reasonable. So again, I want to thank Mayor Fagan, Councilwoman Hamlet, and Councilman Smallwood for their work on the Board of School estimate and their commitment to public education at Summit while still being sensitive to its impact on taxpayers. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm going to email it.
Good evening. Adriana Alarcón, Springfield Avenue, A-L-A-R-C-O-N, commenting to address the urgent situation with Salt Brook, no surprise. I never knew what we always refer to as the stream that ran behind my house was called Salt Brook, until I had to do so much research and work around it. Fun fact, Salt Brook got its name when the locals dumped their salt into the brook to keep it out of the hands of advancing British soldiers during the American Revolutionary War. Wonder what the DEP would have said about that? Councilman Palowski, you can put that in your back pocket for a historical minute down the line.
Maybe you can come in and give one.
I do want to take a moment to thank Mayor Fagan, councilmembers Hamlet, Palowski, Ann Boyer, and CFO Tammy Baldwin for visiting my property on March 21st with county representatives and Congressman Tom Keen Jr. I appreciate you taking the time to assess this situation firsthand, and I hope that Congressman Keen's support will be the final piece to the puzzle, and we can finally get the problem resolved. The land loss is accelerating with every rainfall, and I'm in desperate need of help. The drainage system is overwhelmed by overdevelopment, leading to unsustainable runoff into Salt Brook. What was once a gentle brook now transforms into an aggressive river during rainfall. The broken county pipe needs immediate repair, and the entire length of the stream requires reevaluation to address the increased runoff from recent construction. But that's only part of it. Upstream developments and alterations over the years, both sanctioned by the town and those that weren't, negatively impacted downstream areas like mine through effects such as altered flow patterns, increased sediment movement directly leading to bank destabilization and collapse. And so while I'm in immediate need of help to stop the catastrophic devastation caused to my land, this illustrates the importance of a greater long-term solution, as well for the stream from the beginning to the end. I'm so grateful this mayor and the council is willing to uphold those fiduciary duties that were neglected by predecessors, because so many of you have observed, the situation is worsening rapidly. Clear that one more rainstorm could lead to the loss of the little that's left in my backyard. Your prompt attention to this matter is essential. I've passed along contact information for two companies who have reached out and are capable and willing to provide temporary mitigation now and possibly wider-range solutions in the future. I really hope that the town teams together with other government officials to solve the larger problem as well. This grave issue affects the entire community along Salt Brook, making it a shared problem. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Want to hand your statement to the clerk?
Sure, he emailed it to me.
Oh, perfect. Thank you so much. Okay, other comments?
Susan Bowen, 45 Waldron. I just came to this meeting for general interest, but as I sat here, I thought about the fact that I, my other house is at a lake, and when you have a teenager who wants to drive a boat, as Don can tell you, it's sort of a cumbersome process to get a boat license. And it's serious, and it's the same test that adults take. And I'm wondering if we have these essentially children driving motorized bicycles, why aren't we thinking, and this isn't a criticism, it's just an idea, why aren't we thinking of some sort of city-based, adult, serious, and cumbersome process before they even get on that bike? Because I'm not a doctor, but I watch a lot of TV, and the reason I like the boating licenses is because driving a boat is life or death, like it or not, even on Laco Paccon, it's life or death. Driving one of these little bikes is life or death, or maybe even more complicated. It's a lifelong injury. It's a TBI. And I'm just sort of thinking, maybe we should be thinking about it. Just an idea. That's all.
Thank you.
Don Nelson, 20 Plain Street. These motorized scooter, electric scooters, they're motorcycles with electric motors. They really are. I'm a lifelong motorcycle rider, I wear all the gear whenever I go out. How about we go back to city licenses? We used to license bicycles, used to license mopeds. I know it's another bureaucratic thing, but short of, hey, there's a guy on a black scooter where he shouldn't be, hey, look, there's a bicycle license hanging off the back of his motorcycle, well, scooter, or electric bicycle from the city of Summit, and then we can track who it is. I have my mom's moped from 1974 because she, she used to see me ride all the time, and then she got a moped to keep up with us, but they were way too slow. She had to register with the city of Summit. I still have the license on the back. So maybe that's another way we can think about tracking how these electric scooters work. Like I said, scooter does 25 miles an hour, the doctor could probably confirm this, you fall and hit the ground at 25 miles an hour, the bicycle helmet's really not, it'll help, but it's not really going to help a lot. So really, it's about safety. Like I said, a lifelong motorcycle rider, always wear your gear, but we need to track these things and make sure that people are held accountable for their use. Thanks.
Thank you.
Good evening. John Bolger. Originally Summit resident from 2006 to 2011, and recently moved back in 2017 where my family and I live on 3 Cowanay Drive. In the early morning of February 10th at approximately 4:00 AM, our home was invaded by three perpetrators. Please note that our home and cars were fully locked when the perpetrators broke and smashed the window on our heavy front door and reached through the broken window to unlock both the deadbolt and the lock on the door handle. Again, the cars were locked in the driveway, and the key fob, the key fobs were stored in the kitchen. The perpetrators were very strategic and purposeful with their plan. I had actually been up overnight working out of the back of the house and was awake when the intrusion took place. So I immediately went to investigate the loud crashing noise inside the house. I naively thought it might have just been a picture frame that fell. I was absolutely startled and shocked as I looked down the stairs to see two men in gray hoodies and masks on, standing in the house. One was opening up the front door and manning the door, the other one was holding a flashlight and ransacking our dining room. It was a very surreal moment. I yelled immediately for the perpetrators to exit the house, but surprisingly, they continued to ransack the house. So I yelled again that I had actually called the police, and at this point, when they were still being stubborn, I actually started to come down the stairs. Concurrently, there was a third perpetrator who now comes flying out of the hallway from the kitchen with the three key fobs and exits the house. The other two followed. The first perpetrator to exit jumped into the last car in the driveway and got away with the truck. The other two actually jumped into the getaway car, and both cars sped off very quickly down the road. After checking on my family upstairs to ensure their safety, I ran back to the office in the, on the second floor of the house to grab my cellphone to call the police. Thankfully, no one was physically hurt in my family, but I will share it has left us all feeling violated and vulnerable. The Summit Police were very helpful, and actually even recovered the car later that afternoon, but unfortunately, the perpetrators were never found. I know this is a story, one story of many, and is consistent with the continued problem over several years. I'm happy that there was a downward trend in 2024, but the home burglaries in Summit continue, and the perpetrators continue to get bolder with recent incidents of perpetrators carrying a gun. I am encouraged that Summit has implemented strategies to reduce these aggressive acts, but I think we need to keep doing more. We need more reform to disincentivize potential criminals. In addition, I think we need to continue to support the Summit Police Department with additional resources across technology and personnel. I know we've done license plate readers and drones, but technology's not enough. I think we also need additional officers to patrol more. In summary, we can do everything right, lock our houses and cars, but we can still be victims. Everyone deserves peace of mind to know that their families are safe. I wanted to share this story so that we can strategize to prevent additional home invasions and hopefully prevent catastrophic outcomes from this point forward.
Thank you.
Thank you for your time.
May I have your statement, sir?
Just drop your statement.
I'll send it. I may change this.
Thank you.
Vicki Letterman, Clark Street. This is not about zoning. As of this evening, the Wilson Park Neighborhood Petition has 217 verified signatures. This opposition to the proposed building design on the Red Cross property, together with the huge number of significant zoning variances and the enormous parking deficiency, means to keep the peace, we should look for another solution for the church, the property, and for Summit. At the March 17 zoning board meeting, the Minister, Robin Tanner, said there were 300 members in the congregation, while the website says there are 450, which is a 50%, more, plus another 150 children. She also said around 60 members live in Summit. Assuming that that's also not a distortion, then only 13% of the adults are Summit residents, and 87% live elsewhere. There's no reason the church couldn't be built in one of the 50 other communities with more space the website claims the members come from. It's time to think outside the variances. I propose the church sell and Summit buy the Red Cross and Sutherby Waldron properties for fair market price, so the church can be built on a bigger piece of property in a better location. This would free the church of the headache of finding... This would free the church of the headache of finding buyers whose projects comply with city zoning and enable them to buy a larger and better suited property. There are other, much more appropriate uses for both properties that are in keeping with the zoning and historic nature of the neighborhoods. Part of the Sotheby's Waldron property can be converted into permanent housing for our honorary mayor, Andy Anderson, and the other Our House clients. The Waldron site can be converted into a mix of affordable workforce and market-rate condos while preserving the historic architecture of the building's exterior and entry hallway, which most builders would surely destroy. One of the things I love most about Summit is we take care of our own. I can just about guarantee that Summit residents would donate generously to help the city buy both properties for Our House and other charitable needs if they are priced fairly. This is a win-win for everyone. The congregation gets fair price for the properties without the realtor's fees or headache of finding an acceptable buyer. They get to build their dream church on a more suited property that doesn't require variances and has enough parking space, and Summit gains a permanent home for its deserving residents in addition to more suitable housing. No one loses, and we keep Andy here, home in Summit, where he belongs. Let's do this.
Thank you. Other comments?
I have a couple statements, so I'm going to try to make this quick. I want to thank the Board of Ed School of Summit. I really appreciate all the hard work. I'd also like to talk about the upcoming master plan and the transparency. I talked about it at the Board of School Estimate, and, oh, Dory Gagnon, sorry. 27 Bedford. The transparency, I have no idea what was on the budget, like Mayor Fagan said. I have no idea what was cut. The only thing I do know that was supposed to be on the budget was a dance instructor because they put a dance studio. I have no idea if it was cut. I haven't looked at what the final budget was. But I do want to say is that the master plan's coming up, and I'd like to have some idea of what we want in this town, long-term goals. I was talking to fellow residents today at Tatlock, and I said, you know, Tatlock had such potential. And I know Mayor Fagan and I used to coach lacrosse, and we had such grand ideas of what Tatlock could be, or it could have been years ago. And over the, the long-term goals of our, all of our playgrounds and stuff, and people want, 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 I think we need to think, as a city, our goals. And so as we look forward to our master plan, we need to think of our goals as a town, and sit down with our community members, maybe have a town hall, and say, what are our goals going to be for the next 10, 15, 20 years? The other thing I want to touch on is the homelessness in this town, and I know everyone's here, and we all have opinions. And I really appreciate the Homelessness Task Force. However, there's an experience that happened with me over the last several years, and not many people are aware of it. A couple of years ago, my husband spoke at a meeting that I had an altercation with somebody. That was a couple of years ago. And my son had an altercation at work in town. He, a homeless man, came up and asked for food. He said, I don't have the authority to give you free food. His boss was not there at the time. And the man said, if I had my gun on you, on me, I would shoot you. Now, I want everybody to take that in who's behind me. My son is underage. And just think, as a parent, how that felt for your son to come home, to know that somebody said they would kill him because he wasn't able to give him food. Think about that for a second. I also want you to know, I lost a brother to gun violence.
Ms. Gagnon, just address the council, please.
So to have a son come home and say that somebody would kill him because he couldn't give him food is traumatizing. This homeless man is not well. He needs mental health, he's addicted to drugs. He's one of the few that does not want to get help in town. Now, Mr. Boyer had an, you know, his daughter had a problem in town, an altercation, and a knife was pulled on his daughter a couple of weeks ago. Another homeless man does not want to get help. So I understand where everyone's coming from. We want to help people. Please let's understand there's some people that don't want help, but we need to figure out a way to get those people help before our children are hurt. So I want everybody to understand where some of us are coming from. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Chassel and Modesto, 61 Butler Parkway. I would like to compare and contrast the Beacon Project on Springfield Avenue and the Tatlock Lights Project. There have been many common concerns from residents regarding both projects, including parking, increased traffic, noise, decreased home values, changing the character of the neighborhood, lighting, and plans changing once the development occurs. But that is where the similarities end. The process could not be more different between these two projects. Beacon sent many notices directly to affected residents. Residents have the opportunity to ask questions of church leaders and the experts in a civilized hearing with no enforced time limitations. Residents are allowed to ask follow-up questions and engage in a bit of back-and-forth with Reverend Tanner and the experts that will follow. The residents were also privy to site plans, schedules, and studies prior to these hearings. By stark contrast, the city had failed to even once notify residents in the immediate vicinity of Tatlock of the project. Tatlock neighbors were told to submit questions online, many of which remain unanswered months later. The one opportunity we were given to discuss the project with experts was transformed from an informational meeting into a pep rally for lights at the DCP's urging. Residents were provided drafts of the environmental and traffic reports just short of the meeting, without the data included, and were told to keep their questions to 30 seconds and each expert's time limited to 30 minutes. Residents of Tatlock were jeered at and intimidated when they got up to speak. The studies themselves were so flawed that they never would have held up under any real scrutiny. So perhaps that is why the meeting was formatted, to be chaotic and ambiguous. A bat study for five days in October, not really looking to find anything. Claiming a rainy Saturday afternoon game draws the same crowds as a Friday night lights game, blatantly inaccurate. And no full lighting plan exists for the project, only a rendering from Musco showing the eight stadium lights. There is no plan showing the necessary lighting for the track, pathways, parking lots, and sidewalks. There was no opportunity to discuss the reach and impact of the lights with an engineer, only with a salesman invested in making a $1.4 million deal. And no one has been able to get a consistent answer on what the plan for use, timing, and scheduling of the lights would be. The answer is always different depending on who you are speaking to, and that is perhaps the scariest part of this entire project. I understand that the Beacon Project is requesting variances, and that is why it went before the zoning board. But the city is looking to deliberately disregard its own lighting ordinance for the Tatlock project, so the city should be held to the same standards as any other developer in town. Thank you.
Thank you. Other public comments?
PJ Angler, 16 High Street. So I've been here for a couple council meetings, again, to talk about the Tatlock Light Project. I, obviously, I don't want to address other people from the crowd, but I'll address the council. I think a few things that I just want to kind of highlight is, in terms of the research and studies that council has conducted, I think they have been thorough. I think they've been very clear. This is not a surprise. I think we, we know from the field studies, I think one of the quotes from David Guida was that there is not a single program that was not having its needs met with field, in terms of field space. In terms of the Musco project, it's very clear what these lights, you know, can and cannot do, and where the light does shine. If you've ever been to any one of these fields, Scotch Plains Fanwood has some of these lights. You can see it for yourself. Yes, Musco is the contractor, but these lights also qualify for the Dark Sky Initiative, which means they have to meet certain criteria that is, that is deliberately done by a third party to determine that it meets that criteria. So I think it's very clear that the impact to the, to the environment and the surrounding areas is highly mitigated. With regards to the traffic study, yes, we know there's some traffic issues in relation to home varsity football games, graduation, the relays. Those things aren't going to change because we have lights, and they're not going to get worse. There's only so many home games that the, that the varsity team gets, and there's only going to be, you know, a few nights where there'll be a Friday Night Lights game. So I get that there will be some minor inconveniences sporadically throughout the year, but again, and I've been, I've been saying this on multiple occasions, the need for the lights is predominantly driven by practice time. Yes, there'll be some benefits for game times, but if you think about how sports work, youth sports, high school sports, the number of practices far out exceed the number of games, and half your games are away. So the reality of it is, is most of this is needed for practice time to meet the needs of our growing youth sports in town. This has also been something that's been discussed for 20 years since the fields were originally turfed. It's something that's been known, and something that's, that people have been debating for years, so I don't think it's a surprise for anyone that this is still, you know, a topic of, of debate. But again, I think this is, this is something that we need in this town. Youth sports is a cornerstone of this town, and we are struggling to meet the needs of our, of our children in this town. As those needs continue to increase, we need to be able to increase field space. And the lights, at a minimum, they won't fully fill those needs, but it'll do, you know, be a step in the right direction. So, yeah, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you.
Other members of the public wish to make a comment? Okay, I'm going to close public comments. We'll move on to council member comments and new business. Who would like to go first? Councilwoman Hamlet.
Thank you. Council President, I guess I have a couple of updates. The electric scooters, I tend to agree with Ms. Bowen. I think we should take a closer look at that. I see these kids running, going all day long on these scooters. I almost hit one the other day because it came literally right next to my car. So I think it's a good start, but I, I do think we should try to take another look. I don't have really any great ideas on it, but it might be an opportunity to, to take another look. It is very, very dangerous. In regarding to the Board of School Estimate, I just want to thank Matt Giacobi. We have a veteran lawyer who represents a lot of boards of ed. The job of the School of Board Estimate is to hold, not only work with the school board and the administration, but to hold them to task and, and to truly advocate for your taxpayer dollars. And I'm proud of the work we accomplished. In fact, I appreciate a lot of residents who reached out and, and taught us a lot about the process as it was our first time. And so thank you, Matt, for your guidance. Matt was, Matt was the taxpayer bully that week behind the scenes, and you did a great job, so thank you. Regarding the ordinance tonight, it wasn't too long ago that Rich and I were high-fiving in LA at the Homeless Task Force conference. And, you know, we have had a lot of successes with the Homeless Task Force. What I will say is, a year ago, I was, I would say we were battling about this ordinance, right, Bob? I was a little hesitant to do the ordinance, and I think Mike Callahan from DCA said to me, he said, you know, why don't you guys give yourselves a year, 14 months, and really make some progress? And we did. And so we're sitting out in LA, and we're doing a presentation, and I'm speaking to the audience, mostly who is, not too many Republicans in the audience, but we're all sharing successes on how we've worked together in a bipartisan fashion for moving along towards eradicating homelessness. And I said, you know, the way we did that in Summit is not only did we involve all the partners in the community, but we put boundaries on the homeless individuals. And it made it a lot better. You know, they actually had a lot of respect for the fact that we put certain boundaries on them. So for instance, we said, you know, we worked with Reverend Tanner at Warm Hearts and Grace, and we said, you know, we don't want to give these folks opportunity in the evening unless they involve themselves in case management. And we, we made a lot of progress with that, and they started craving case management, and people started getting housed. And it was a true success story. And that was through a lot of the efforts through the community here. And I, I would tell you that there are some individuals who, who although we're showing them boundaries, they're scaring our children. They're making some of the residents feel safe, and they must be held accountable, whether they're homeless or not. If they're urinating in public, we're not going to tolerate it. If they're brandishing knives, we're not going to tolerate it. But the average homeless individual who's sleeping on the bench, we're going to reach out five or seven times to provide them case management, to the point where it's exhausting. And I know that our chief here would certainly do the same thing and advocate for his police officers to do the same thing. There are certain individuals who are choosing to be a nuisance in town and scaring our children. And I think that this ordinance will protect your children, your businesses, and I think it will help keep everyone safe. We've done a great job. We should be, all of us should be really proud of ourselves. So I don't think this ordinance, I think it's worth some discussion. I think we should talk to the Homeless Task Force and DCA, and we might have some ideas on how to make it better, but I think that it's a good start. So thank you for all who came to talk about it tonight, but I think we've, we've been able to engage so many people that we haven't been able to engage in years. Maybe it's, maybe it's luck, maybe it's, who knows? But last thing regarding the planning board, I just want to give a quick update. At our last meeting, we talked about, by the end of June, we will have to have completed our housing fair, fair share element plan. What that means in terms of timing, we've had our first public input session for the public. We'll have a few more. These are your opportunities to talk to the planning board about things you want changed. If you want the light ordinance to be lower, if you, there are certain things for the master plan. We're evaluating our DRO. The planning board is really your opportunity to talk about things like that. The planning board DRO revisions start in the planning board, and then they get passed to the governing body. So I think some good points are made around, you know, how capital projects are looked at and Board of Ed projects. I've recommended a complete capital review by the planning board because I think it's a really good point, that some projects are looked at differently, and we're talking about it a lot, but please come to the planning board. We only had two comments last week at the planning board, so I won't talk anymore, but please come to the planning board, and thank you all for coming tonight.
Thank you. Other council member comments?
Council President.
Councilwoman Boyer.
Through you. Mr. Bolger, my heart goes out to you. I know when me and Councilman Palowski was at your house, the story is still, still grips me today. I, you know, I can play it back in my head several, several times, and it's heartbreaking. And I can only imagine what you felt at the top of those stairs, and your story is kind of maybe the number one reason that I ran for council. And I am, I am enthusiastic about the future of policing in Summit. The last, over the last two weeks, I've seen more police officers around this town than I've ever seen in my life. I can't get away from them, you know? I drive by and I smile, and I'm like, Captain Peters, you know? But I, you know, I do want to, I do want to commend Captain Peters. I think the, the police presence in our downtown and other areas has been drastically, drastically different. I mean, it is what it is. I think we just need to get you the resources that you need. I mean, going through these interviews with captains and even interviewing you, Chief, I think we know what the police need, right? We just need to get there, and there are some, there's some great plans ahead. So I'm enthusiastic about it because we, we need to protect our residents. Secondly, I want to, I want to thank Councilwoman Hamlet and Smallwood and the mayor, but more Councilwoman Hamlet, because I talk to her a lot because we're in caps together. And man, she was in the books, man. I, the, the Board of Education, they, I don't think, I know it was a partnership to get it lower, you know, I'll be politically correct, but she wasn't letting them get away with that. I mean, every time I talked to her, she had these, she had documents that I've never even seen before. I don't even know how she got them. And I, I just, I got to tell you, I, I appreciate your tenacity, you know? You, you did an amazing job. People behind the scenes really don't know how hard that you work. You are a stickler for detail for a lot of different things. I don't even know, sometimes I'm like, weren't we here? And what are we talking about now? So I appreciate you on that. In terms of the electric scooters, so I don't want people to get the wrong idea. This ordinance was about the outcry of people being hit by them, right? We had serious injuries. We had serious injuries where pedestrians were ran over by scooters and electric vehicles and different things. And so, the outcry for this past year, especially emails to me, was, "Councilman Boyer, you need to get them off the sidewalk. We can't walk. I was hit in the traffic circle and whatever," right? And I think this addresses that. This makes our downtown safer for us to walk, it makes pedestrian safety on the sidewalks safer, it addresses that. Now, if you want to make Summit, have a DMV in Summit, you know, we did talk about that, and man, that's a heavy move, right? And what I foresee is, once you do something like that, the state would actually catch up and actually make the laws. So all the resources that you put into it will be for naught, right? It just takes some time for the state to catch up. But right now, you know, I'd like for parents to, you know, tell their kids, you know, to wear helmets, because the police will stop them, right? Stay off the sidewalks, right? And, you know, keep the speed down. And by the way, I get emails, and I know a lot of the parents, I call them, and I'm like, "Your son was going faster than the car next to me. You need to talk to little Johnny," right? And that works. So as a community, I know, a lot of you know, who are riding the bike, bicycles, electric scooters, was talk to their parents. I know some of you have glasses of wine with them, bring it up, you know? Like, "Hey, I seen your kid the other day, he's going like 80 miles an hour. Can we, you know, slow it down a little bit?" So, I think we should start there. Listen, lastly, homelessness is complicated, right? You know, and I'm not going to get into it, it's complicated, but I don't want any of you to feel, never feel like anyone up here, whether you're for the ordinance or against it, has anything against anybody, has any discriminatory, you know, issues, don't like this or that. I think everybody up here generally loves, you know, people, that's why we're up here. And if you look at our records, we've all done the things to help people, right? So, I think keep an open mind about, about what we're trying to accomplish. I think it's balance. So, last but not least, making really good progress with the Summit Housing Authority. I think this is the year that the residents there will finally get what they deserve, what they've been looking for, for, you know, over a decade, and I am confident with the new leadership, and we're working hard to do it. Not only do I have family members there, but I have some friends that I've known for most of my life, so I'm uber-focused on that. So, thank you, Council President.
Thank you. Other comments from council? Councilman Palowski.
Thank you. I got a bunch of things on my list here. I'd also like to thank Delia, Kevin, Mayor Fagan, and Matt for the hard and good work that they did with the Board of School estimates. And, you know, Delia, you see, had a great catch here tonight with one of our resolutions. You know, sometimes I think I'm having a nightmare, I wake up and there are screenshots of numbers. It's like, is this supposed to mean something to me? But I thank you guys for that. And to Council President McTiernan's point about transparency, I had gone to a couple meetings, and I spoke to the school board about that, and, you know, we're in a community, right, where everything gets politicized, right? And there were people there in support of the budget when it was at 8.8%, and if you didn't, if you didn't pass it, you don't like the kids, you're against the kids, right? And, you know, obviously, that's not true. And there are other people who say, "You can't raise it at all. If you raise it at all, you're being fiscally irresponsible." And what I asked the school board to do was make the case, right? Make the case for what you need. Show us why this is going up, not just vagaries about, you know, increased insurance and benefits. We know that that's there, but that was a small part of the increase that they were asking for. So, I'm hoping that they will make the case, and maybe they can come and give us a presentation like we give, you know, a more detailed one. I don't know if we can make them do that, maybe suggest that they do it and hope that they do it. Earth Day was great, it's great to see the community come together to clean things up, but I'll note that the other 364 days a year, I'm hearing about what a mess our city is. And some of us have gone out on other days with bags and cleaned out tree wells and picked up trash in the streets and worked on Martinsburg Park. So, as far as I'm concerned, if you really care, every day's Earth Day. So, get out there, it's not just a photo op once a year. In community programs, we're discussing what I'll call a traveling road show with regards to bike safety. I'm not sure if they still do it here, but I remember when I was a kid, we would learn all the hand signals, you know, where bikes are supposed to go. If a lot of these kids ever learned that, they are either blatantly ignoring it, or they've completely forgotten. Because we're out there, right? And they pull right up next to the cars. And I've seen people, you know, turn left in front of a car from the right-hand lane, because they're not abiding by the traffic rules, and it's for everybody's safety. I wanted to, and so maybe we can, you know, put together some kind of an assembly that we hit once a year, you know, it'd be, what are there, eight schools? Eight public schools in town, right? So, you know, we hit each of those once. I want to thank John Bolger for coming in and telling his story. I know it's not easy to relive something like that, and I agree, right? There are all kinds of measures that we can take, and for a long time, you know, this was politicized too, right? One faction was saying, "We need more police." Another faction was saying, "No, no, no, we just need more technology." And I always kind of said, "Why not both? Let's do both. We have to do everything we can to keep things safe here." The two are not mutually exclusive, they're important pieces of the same puzzle. I want to give a Tatlock Neighborhood Committee update. We had our first meeting last week, and I think it went well. We discussed a whole host of issues that we're going to try to tackle this year. Improving the bus drop-off from our visiting teams, alerting neighbors to events when they're going to happen so that they can plan, enforcement of parking rules, the Butler-Morris crosswalk that we've been working on, kids speeding from the high school to Tatlock. If you have kids that practice there and they're rushing to get down there, they got to slow down, right? Washington school kids are getting out at the exact same time, and I saw with my own eyes, people just flying by. Cars illegally parked on that curb, so the cars have to go even further out. You have students who are walking down there. I saw students walk diagonally from Webster across to the opposite corner of Butler, when there are a million cars around. I spoke to our athletic director at the high school and asked her to make sure that she passed on to the coaches to tell these kids to be more careful. Parking enforcement, positioning of speakers during games, having no parking signs out during sporting events in certain areas, and doing it kind of religiously, right? The Summit Relays is coming up, that's a huge day. Graduation, home football games, big lacrosse games, right? It really does put a burden on that neighborhood, and we have to do everything that we can to help. And then we also talked about potential parking expansion at the Field House and some of the pros and cons that might go with that. So, we're exploring lots of options. We had a really good meeting, and I'll give a report after the next meeting. And as for Ms. Modesto's comment before, you'd have to say that I have always welcomed any conversation about what parameters would be around lights, and nobody's taken me up on it yet. My door is still open, and I'm willing to talk to people about that anytime. That's it.
Thank you. Other comments from council? Yes, Councilwoman Combsen.
Thank you, thank you, Council President. One, about Tatlock, I think it would be really helpful if the DCP did, or somebody did provide some parameters about when the lights are going to be on, because I also received two different answers. I received one answer from a council member within a matter of a few days, and one answer from a DCP employee, and then I was told, "Well, aren't you going to address that in the committee? Aren't you going to address the times when the lights are going to be on in that Tatlock committee?" And I said, "Well, no, that's completely separate from lights, that's strictly about traffic." So I think there's a lot of confusion, and it would be really helpful if that was cleared up. Also, about the camping ordinance, I have concerns about this, and I think we need to talk about it as a community. I had a conversation with Councilman Boyer, we had a very nice conversation earlier. I didn't know about this ordinance until a week ago, and I think it needs to be discussed with the community, and I think we need to understand what the potential consequences could be. I don't know if there are any, but I'm glad we have the opportunity. I would like for people to reach out to me if you want to have a conversation about it, I would love to hear from you, because I hear, you know, I know people, they're concerned about people being, you know, very vulnerable when they're unhoused, and we also have people who are very concerned about their children, right? And I want to hear from everybody, so I'm glad this conversation has started. I think that's it for me. Thank you.
Great, thank you. Other comments?
I have some more things to check for.
Yeah, yeah, please, Madam Mayor.
Thank you. One, I just wanted to tag something, Councilman Palowski, sir, would you like a cough drop? I'm doctoring on the dais. Bob mentioned the Summit Relays, which are this Saturday, and also, the opening day for Summit Junior Baseball is also Saturday. Summit will be a buzz, there will be traffic, leave early, park legally. Thank you, that is one thing. And then, I was remiss, because I did not remember to mention the One Moment, Three Decisions event that happened at the high school last Wednesday and Thursday, coordinated by the Board of Education, the Police Department, and the, supported by Shaping Summit Together. It's an incredible program, it's every, it's done every other year, this was the fifth time that it was done. If you don't know about it, please check out, there should be a link on the Board of Ed website, and you can actually just, in YouTube, type in "One Moment, Three Decisions," or maybe it's, there's some other name for the program.
Oh, I'm 3D.
Well, no, 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 there's a, it's like a national, every 15 minutes, thank you, Kev. So, it's a really incredible program, and it's about drunk, drunk, drunk and distracted driving, and it's really, really powerful. I've seen the video before, I've never seen it in person. It's, I was in tears. It's really powerful. So, something for you to check out, especially if you have kids that are becoming permitted drivers and licensed drivers, because they should see it too. Thank you.
Thank you. Other comments from council?
Through you, Council President.
Yes, Councilwoman Boyer.
I don't know how I almost forgot this. Chief Zagorski's retirement party will be Tuesday, April 29th, 4:00 p.m. at City Hall. We want to give the chief a send-off that he deserves after 36 years of service, so I wanted to announce that. And I think that's it.
Glad you remembered that. Good. Other comments? Councilman Palowski.
I just said "um," and my wife just texted me that I had too many "ums." There it is again. The Tatlock Committee is not about whether to put up lights, but I think if that decision's ever made, the parameters around that absolutely would be open for discussion in that committee. That's it.
Other comments? All right, I'll just wrap it up. I want to thank everyone for coming. Hopefully, I would say I would echo what Councilwoman Combsen had. I'm not going to talk about the upcoming ordinances, I'm going to talk about those at the hearing, but I am open to grab a coffee with anybody who wants to talk about these things. I'd love to hear different viewpoints and opinions, and I hope people would like to hear mine. So, please reach out, and I know most, everyone up on this dais feels the same way. Thank you for, Mr. Bolger and Ms. Gagnon for sharing their stories tonight. It is something that we all take very, very seriously, and, you know, I said this last meeting, the meeting before, you know, one of the things I believe, one of the primary responsibility of government is to keep their citizenry safe, and we do take it very seriously. And we are looking at this as a multi-pronged approach to do that, and to give our great police officers the resources that they need. They're incredible, they're professional, you know, we can't change human nature, crime will happen, but we want to mitigate it to the greatest extent possible that we can. So, thank you for sharing your stories, because it is, we do need to remember, these are our neighbors, people we live with, or that we live next to, and we should have amazing amount of empathy for what they've gone through. So, thank you for that. And then, I would also plug what Councilwoman Hamlet said about the planning board. The master plan is going to be happening. They're going to start kicking off planning for that. You will start to see the creation of committees, subcommittees, around what we want Summit to look like for the next 10 years, okay? So, these things happen every 10 years or so, it's going to begin happening soon, so we would welcome input. That's why our city is such a great place to live, is because people care, and they volunteer their time, and they volunteer their perspective to keep, to make it a beautiful place to raise a family and to live. And I had one other thing, but people have been here for a long time, so I'm going to wrap it up with that. So if there are no further council comments, do I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right, we are adjourned.